We will move on to our next item, 6.4. Consideration of 2026 cultivation and business tax rates. Treasurer Tax Collector, Patrick Sullivan.
So, thank you for having us here today to discuss this. Patrick Sullivan, Treasurer Tax Collector. And I'm here with Liz Martinez, Assistant Treasurer Tax Collector. Our office has received many inquiries about this matter over the last few months, so I wanted to bring it to your board's attention. And that is the consideration of 2026 cannabis cultivation and business tax rates. If your board will recall, over the last several years, there have been adjustments made to the cannabis tax on several occasions. Most notably are some of the adjustments with the rate impositions. There was a 50% reduction granted. And there was also a change from canopy, from cultivation area to canopy area. Those are two of the key, the key points of contention, I think, in terms of the comments we've received. What our office is wondering is, with those two areas, both the tax rate itself and the cultivation versus canopy area, and as well as we realize CPI, Consumer Price Index is a consideration as well, if your board wishes to make any changes. Right now, there's a resolution in effect that will lapse at the end of this year, meaning that these reductions will go away. So, the status quo would result, would actually go back to the original measure. Tax rates would be restored. We would go back to cultivation area instead of canopy. And we would go and impose a CPI increase each year on both the cultivation and business tax. So, I know this is a matter of concern for cultivators and cannabis business operators. It's a matter of concern for our office as well. And I think our biggest ask is that whatever the board decides to do, if you do wish to make any changes, that we resolve this by the end of this calendar year. Because cannabis runs on a calendar year system. So, January 1st, whatever system is in place will go into effect. So, we really want to avoid making retroactive changes. We'd like to set it this year. So, we wanted to bring it to your board's attention so that you can discuss. We do have, we provided additional information with the agenda, including the cannabis tax history, the resolutions. I know time sensitive, so I don't know that we need to run through that. But if you, if there are any questions, we're happy to go through that.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this in plenty of time for the end of the year. But just to recap on these changes that we made, we have the ability, like the voters, it's been brought up a lot. The voters voted on certain thresholds. But we have the ability to lower them, but never raise them.
Yeah, and I would clarify, there is, because there may have been some confusion on this, there's another item coming from our office in two weeks. It will be revised cannabis tax ordinance. So, permanent changes and other more substantive changes to the ordinance would occur there. But yes, we, our office's understanding is that we cannot expand the scope of the tax. We cannot increase it either in rate or in application. But your board is able to direct us to make other temporary modifications that result in a reduction rather than expansion.
Okay, and then, just looking at the broad, broadly, what's happening around the state. So, the state has temporarily reduced the excise tax for three years, correct?
Yes, the state has reduced that tax. I would note that there are other counties and cities that have continued to offer reductions. I think most notably is Humboldt County. Humboldt County has suspended their cannabis tax. I would point out, we're very differently situated than them. Their, their tax revenue had really crashed. They're structured differently than we are in the ability to enforce the tax. So, I know we see decreases in some suspensions statewide, but I would point out that each situation's unique.
Okay. So, I mean, given everything that our tax collectors just shared with us, and what's happening in the economy, and the market, the cannabis market is the reason why the state has made these reductions, I'm okay with just holding this for another year and coming back and looking at it next year and evaluating it.
Vice Chair.
Yeah, I appreciate you providing all the background documents. I don't think we need to go through all that today. But I definitely want to get a decision made because I don't want you to have to deal with this after we're in the middle of a calendar year. I think we need to make a decision right away so that we can be clear on next year. And I'm okay with, with leaving, leaving it how it is for one year and then reevaluating it. I don't want to go, I wouldn't want to go longer than that. But I think I'd be comfortable with, with a year of status quo or re, however we have to redo that for one year.
So, just to clarify what you're, what you're getting at, that would require bringing back a resolution that would extend the modifications for a year, that we would offer the 50% rate reduction. We would offer the canopy area for imposing the tax. And we would suspend the CPI. And that would, that would be for a year. And we would have to return with that resolution. Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry, I said Vice Chair. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. I agree with my colleagues that we need to continue moving forward. I still wish and hope that in the future, we will get to a point where we can set a percentage on this. So, no matter what happens to the, the price of a pound of cannabis, we will still continue to grow and, and collect what is appropriate. Everything else is based on a percentage. Here, it's a flat fee. And I just think that eventually, that's where we need to go. I know that's been a concern to go there, but I want to keep harping that that is the best way that we can do this in the future. Those who think that we should be taxing people who don't do an activity that is, that is horrible, just because you went into a store doesn't mean you should be taxed for every item you looked at. It should be what you're actually buying. What you get taxed on cultivation should be what you actually cultivated, not just because you have land and a permit. We shouldn't be forcing people to pay taxes on something they're not even doing. That makes no sense to me whatsoever. So, I appreciate that we've come to a consensus that it is the cultivation area, the cultivation, the canopy area, not the other ancillary pieces of land. And looking at ways to ensure that a flat rate does not spell the demise of, of an industry that is currently seeing a 40% year-to-year increase based on this area that we're in. We went from 2.6, approximately 2.5 to 3.5. Let's keep going up. Our sales tax is less than $5 million, and we've almost recreated the sales tax with the cannabis tax. Let's not get out of hand and think we can collect $22 million. It's just not realistic. Nor do I want to force to go there because we've already got some problems that we were just talking about. So, as is, I would love to do two years, but it seems that my colleagues are asking for one year. Just wanted to let people know I'm open for that. And let's continue to grow that tax and contribution to our general fund.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay. Well, I'm kind of looking at it a little differently. I'm looking at what the voters had actually voted on. And I feel that it has recovered some. So, I'm kind of thinking we need to let this expire. I would be willing to have a conversation on the, the canopy versus the cultivation. However, the, as far as the taxes go, I'm one that actually believes that we need to go with what was voted on by the voters.
All right, I'll open it up for the public. If there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on this item, please.
Good afternoon, Board. Kyle Bill with the Konok Tai Native Wellness. And I appreciate the conversation and look forward to the future conversations that are around the cannabis tax specifically. Konok Tai Native Wellness receives a lot of funding from Elevate Youth California, which is revenue from tax, the tax on cannabis. And one of the things that we met with Senator McGuire's office to let him know that the freezes are holding on, the tax increases are going to directly impact a lot of the work that we're doing, especially in rural counties like Lake, to address a lot of the impacts that minority communities have been impacted by the cannabis. Wouldn't say industry, but prior to the cannabis legalization, minority organizations, minority communities were oftentimes impacted by illegal cannabis. And we still have ripple effects of, of that. And we're working right now to address it. But with the tax freeze, it comes with making the, the funding more, way more competitive, especially trying to get a lot of those revenues here in rural areas like Lake County. And so, considering the state of the federal government, we're relying heavily on, on a lot of the local, local and state funding to support a lot of these efforts. And so, one of the concerns that I wanted to bring to the attention, I'm glad that I hear Supervisor Owen and Pyska talking about, is there were promises made prior to getting the, the, the measure passed to legalize cannabis? And, and now to see that some of those promises are not being fulfilled is going to have an effect, especially on youth and minority groups that are doing a lot of work to combat the onset of illegal cannabis activities. And also, some of the tax funds are used to remitigate some of the impacts of illegal cannabis growth in the environment. So, I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that I understand that we need to balance out, you know, how to support local businesses, but also looking at how those funds go into bigger, to make bigger impacts within our community and the work that we do with our youth and our, our environment to do that. So, I would be willing to share a little bit more about some of our efforts and how we've been able to leverage the, the taxed funding that we received to do this work. Because it is something that we're concerned about and just want to ensure that, you know, you as elected officials are informed on some of the impacts, whether or not these, these increases are in place or scaled back or frozen. So, there is an impact. And I just wanted to express that to consider and that we would be willing to meet with anyone to talk a little bit more about some of the work that we're doing with the, the resources that are generated from tax revenue.
Can I ask Kyle?
Yes, please.
Kyle, how much funding do you get? And so, you, your funding for Konok Tai comes from the state's cannabis tax?
Correct. And, and we're looking at over $1 million that we've received just from Elevate Youth California. And that helps also create jobs here in our county because we hire locally. And so, there obviously is a lot of positive effects that we're able to use those revenues from the cannabis tax to do positive things in the community and also contribute to the local economy as well.
Is it a million a year or a million collectively?
Collectively. Our, our last award was nine, it was $500,000 that we received. And then, we received two additional grants prior to that. So, collectively, it's over $1 million that we were able to secure to do work here locally.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments? Please come on up.
Rick Mayo, citizen of Lake. Found the president of local NAACP. If the, if the county government asked the voters to decide on a proposition that you put before them, you should abide by the decision of the voters when you asked them to do that. Because apparently, you didn't want to make the decisions yourself. That is a bad position to be in, to have to make those kinds of decisions when you have the whole populace that have a different point, may have a different point of view on the subject matter. But whatever the citizens voted on, government should always adhere to the decisions of the voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, I just want to, number one, it's a tax. So, it has to be voted on by the voters. And number two, within the, the measure that was approved by the voters, it says the Lake County Board of Supervisors may repeal this chapter or amend it in a manner which does not result in an increase in the amount of the tax, which means we're allowed to amend it to fit what is going to work. And so, we threw something out in 2017 without any permits, without anything, with hopes that maybe the $1 a square foot would work and $2 a square foot would work. The entire state has seen reductions in taxes. The, the state of California has seen a reduction in, in taxes. Voters voted to give us the tool to reduce it. So, we're not going against the voters. We're trying to make this work so we can continue to collect taxes based on what the voters said. Yes, you can go ahead and tax the industry with the caveat that if you need to make changes, you can make those changes. So, I don't disagree that the voters maybe had anticipated a whole lot more. But I think everybody throughout the state of California and every county is not seeing what everybody thought would be this giant bankroll. And so, I just want to at least explain that we're not breaking the trust. It was actually entrusted that we would be able to do that if the need came. So, just wanted to read that out loud.
Good afternoon, Board. There's no provision in Measure C that gave the authority for the board to make an amendment or a modification to the way it's calculated. And the way Prop 2219 is set up, if you're going to make a fundamental change, whether it's the tax rate or the base or some other provision, it has to go before the board. No, I'm sorry, before the voters, excuse me. There's nothing in what was voted upon that says, that I could find in the actual language that was voted on that says, unless the board thinks otherwise, they can do something. I'm not saying that, you know, $22 million is a good idea or a terrible idea. That's, my, my biggest concern is that this was a bargain. The language in the measure mentions that in, in exchange for cultivation, there would be a tax that would provide approximately $8 million at that time in order for it to fund things like education and law enforcement and code enforcement and other services for this, for this county. Because that money is not coming in, those things are either not getting funded or they're being subsidized. The cannabis CDD has been at a net cost to the county for the last three years. And I think it was mentioned 8 point some odd million so far. And it's projected another 2.9 million for the next budget year. So, it's running at a subsidy. That's not sustainable. Last year, when this came up, the conversation was, "Well, I was willing to consider it for another year, but that's it." And now, we're here and we're here, and we'll kick the can again. Meanwhile, we're, we're in a financial crisis as it is, and we're not bringing in the money that we anticipated. And this is not a one-sided bargain. If, if you reduce the taxes and there's no other effect, that's one thing. But there's been an expectation given to the voters that this, this money and revenue would be funding services. And those services either being underfunded, a copter is constantly being challenged because it doesn't have the resources or the personnel. You have, you know, the education I've just mentioned. It, it's not, it's, it's not, "Well, if we lower it, it'll be okay." This needs to go back to the voters. Otherwise, bring it back to the way it was originally articulated and, which is by cultivation site and the $1, $2, $3 rate. And I know that's not what everyone wants to believe, but that is what's in the law. And you're going to set yourself up for potential legal liability and challenge because there's no precedent for, this is not where we're just going to lower the taxes. There's, there's, this was in the, there's no provision for the county in the, in the, what was voted on to allow this reduction. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we need to refer to Lloyd on that?
I don't, not that I know of.
Okay.
I mentioned some of this before. I went to all the meetings and the county folks came and they, they promised us the world. They said that there's going to be all these taxes. It's going to change everything. It's a big game changer. We tried to take a vote at the Middletown Hall saying, you know, "Do you want this or not?" Okay, it was actually kind of a time of enlightenment because a lot of growers came out of the hills with big bogs, with big handfuls of cash that wanted to be legal, which was actually good. And you could see that they were buying land. You could see a lot of stuff that was happening. But I think we got drunk with money. And the reality is this, the county went along with this. They, they were talking numbers like $21 a square foot. When we tried to vote on it, it was such a controversial vote. People who were pro marijuana were saying, "You do not vote," and getting in people's faces. And it got pretty crazy. I thought the cowboys and, and the dope growers were going to fight with each other. If we keep going the way we are going and just not keep the promises that we gave the people, and it passed. And I'm, you know, I spent 31 years in the military. I, I follow the Constitution. I pay my taxes. I do all those good things. We can't just go wishy-washy when we feel like it. The cash is probably all gone. Some people have lost a lot of money. I want to see, the sheriff has basically, you know, took his team that used to go on the hills and take away the gorilla growers away. You're telling me you made $2.5 million? Go get the gorilla growers and make those, the people that are, that are actually growing it legally and paying their taxes. Give them the better chance. Right now, I don't know where the money's going or where it's going to go, but I think we had to tax, we got to tax, we got to tax until we, we get it. It's a capitalist system. You know, I mean, even, even government is a capitalist system because if they don't collect taxes, they can't provide services. I think turning this into some kind of social welfare program for, for something that kills children's brains and doesn't have a whole lot of good qualities, you know, to it. I mean, I, I know the whole argument between the, the vineyard growers and the cannabis growers. Personally, I think you want to give cannabis growers a fair shake, but at the same time, make them pay the taxes. Okay, we, we got to, because there's so many negatives that are going to have to be covered through services. I worked for the probation department here in Lake County. It is horrific what I saw. I saw eight-year-old kids that, that lived in the hills and were malnourished, that, you know, had been raped brutally all the time. For me, it's thinking, "Okay, let's just go ahead and get everybody out of those hills. Those kids can, can go to school and don't have to hide out on boats so they don't get raped." That's what the kids, some of these kids were doing in Lake County back in 1995 when I was working there. They would throw anchor off the side of the boat and hide inside of a boat so they didn't get raped by dope growers. Okay, there's a lot of dark stuff that goes with the whole thing. You know, support the, the legal growers and do the taxes. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good afternoon again, Supervisors. My name is Autumn Karsy, a local business owner and resident here in Lake County. We're both a farm and processing center and co-packing facility. But the majority of our economic impact to Lake County comes from processing local farmers' material into finished goods that generate sales tax, manufacturing jobs, and ongoing revenue for the county. Cannabis is one of the largest tax contributors in Lake County, second only to sales tax. And yet, cannabis is the only agricultural sector taxed on canopy square footage, regardless of whether that canopy ever produces a single dollar of income. You could lose your crop, have crop failure, a fire, and you would still be accountable for the tax that year. No vineyard is taxed per square foot of vines. No pear orchard is taxed on canopy size. Only cannabis is taxed on potential, not production. About the market accurately, the industry is not generating the same revenues it did in years past. There's only so much meat on the bone here. But that's not a sign of failure. It is a market correction caused by overproduction statewide and overtaxation at every level, local, state, and excise. When overproduction intersects with overtaxation, margins compress, not because businesses are poorly operated, but because the math stops working. This is not magic. This is just math. And I want to be clear. I've spoken with small farms, large farms, and everything in between in this county. And every single one of them has said the same thing. If taxes continue to increase, they will not continue to operate here. If the farmers leave, the processors shut down. Other counties are adapting and not tightening. Sonoma County reduced their cultivation tax to 30 cents per square foot to remain competitive and keep the farms in the county. Humboldt County, as mentioned before, eliminated their cultivation tax entirely. This makes careful rate setting essential. Economic consequences for Lake County, because we farm and process, if you run the farmers out of the county with excessive taxation, we will eventually cease to exist. Not because we aren't strong operators, not because we haven't invested tens of millions of dollars, but because we depend on local agricultural supply. When farmers leave, you don't just lose cultivation tax revenue. You lose manufacturing jobs. You lose sales tax from finished goods. You lose downstream economic activity. And you lose one of the largest revenue-producing industries in this county. You cannot grow tax revenue by shrinking the tax base. My request is do not increase taxes, considering aligning with Sonoma to remain competitive, begin drafting Future Ballot Language Initiative that gives the board flexibility when it comes to taxes. We're not asking to avoid taxes. We're only not being, we're only asking not to be taxed out of Lake County. Thank you for your time.
Other comment? Any other, come on up.
Good afternoon, Board. Margot Cambara. Just a reminder, the cannabis industry drafted Measure C. They came up with the framework for taxation. Another reminder is that Lake County has the lowest cannabis tax rate in the state. If we look at tax cuts, what is going to be the criteria? We are not a rich county. So, who is going to get a tax rate? We know that the grape industry is struggling. We know that walnut industry is struggling. But they are our legacy agricultural crops. The number one agricultural crop, according to the latest agricultural report from Lake County, is grape, wine grape. So, please consider the bigger picture of when you are going to be granting tax cuts and reductions in fees, we need to be, as Supervisor Pyska reminds us, that we should be consistent and we should be fair. And it should make sense across the board and across agricultural crops and industries. The other thing is that your board has shown foresight in anticipating impacts to our population, to our community. SNAP funding has stopped. And your board is going to be considering an emergency agenda item to put together a work, a, a work group to look at that. Funding, this is unanticipated budget need. So, we need to be very smart about where we're going to allocate our, our county dollars. Thank you.
Is there anyone on Zoom? Guest, guest.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Angela Amrell. I'd like to, I agree with Mr. Kyle Bill that promises are made or not fully being realized. It was mentioned that there was an increase in tax revenue since 2023. That can actually be attributed to the increase in approved cultivation permits. From 2023 to 2025, tax revenue increased by just over 1.6 million, while the taxable square footage increased by over 7 million square feet. So, taxes from 2023 to 2025 on 7 million square feet should have been closer to $3.5 million. Just for clarity, the full tax rate would be applied to the 2026 growing season, which would be due in 2027. Cultivators will can, will pay their 50% for this year's crop, which is due next year in 2026. The full tax rate would apply to the 2026 crop. So, cultivators have time to reduce or opt out for next year. Taxes for the 2026 season wouldn't be due until 2027. The other thing that you guys have a problem with is that you guys have a lot of growers that are not abiding by the rules that you currently have in place. But yet, here we are discussing another tax reduction in accounting with one of the lowest cultivation rates. The Board of Supervisors wants to keep approving permits and oversaturating the market and at the same time, reduce the local tax rate. This seems like a flawed system that we have going on here. And I think we really need to take another hard look at it again. Thank you.
iPhone Pro Max, please unmute.
Sky Lillay Watt Pillsbury Family Farms, federally recognized member of the Manchester Port Arena Band of Promoter. Port Arena Ban of Palmolines. And I don't have a problem paying our reduced cannabis cultivation tax. Paying the cultivation tax should be a sign of a good factor and a sign of being a good cannabis player. The proposed policies behind the cultivation cannabis tax have devastating real-life consequences for four small, small farmers like myself. My company cultivates only 5,535 square feet, a fraction of an acre. Yet I have been charged as if I was cultivated the full four acres totaling over $64,000 in 2022. And now the proposal to take away the reduction in canopy and eliminate the option to opt out adds another layer of harm. Small legacy farmers like myself will be pushed out by the inability to pay a $64,000 tax bill based on the full four acres, when I only have 8,000 square feet cleared for canopy, and only one state license for one acre, with the state recognizing I cultivate only 5,535 square feet, and already reduced with ongoing revocation proceedings since 2022. Even if I could grow the full four acres, there is no facility in this county that is capable of processing that much product in a short amount of time. And many farmers do rely on the ability to opt out and reduce canopy because it is necessary to survive in the struggling market. And removing the options doesn't strengthen the program. It's designed to increase the taxes, the penalties, and the fines until we're driven out of existence. Thank you Supervisor Pyska for at least raising the question about the cannabis tax revenue and the cannabis equity grant funds from 2022 to 2023. Because while big operations might struggle to get a $2,100 double payment for legacy operators like myself, it's survival money. During 2021 to 2023, the cannabis tax revenue were at a record high, most likely due to double payments from the cannabis equity grant and payments from the farmers. I was recently invited onto the local radio show, Came a Cannabis Hour, to share my experience of legalization and what it's like dealing with these taxes. And when I speak about my situation out loud, I have come to realize that I have been abused by this system and how my situation with our tax collector has inspired the Humboldt Supervisors to get rid of the taxes. So when this memo asks you to provide direction to staff, I am asking you to provide the direction with integrity, demand a full accounting of how the cannabis taxes are administered, ask why the tax collector has inserted himself into revocation matters, ask why a licensed attorney serving in the knowledge of public trust is allowing to use his knowledge to sidestep legal accountability and drive small farms out of existence. Because the emails between Sullivan, Director Turner, County Council Lloyd Guantanamo, and Deputy Administrator Matthew Rothstein, and Grant Analyst Casey Moreno reveal direct coordination, and the Sheriff's Department silence only reinforces how deeply this corruption runs. And it shows that Lake County government employees are allowed to act above the law and not mess up. One last.
Is there any other hands in Zoom? James Anderson?
Good afternoon again, supervisors. James Anderson, Everview Law. I represent a number of cannabis clients in the county and across the state, and I just want to make a couple comments on this. You know, in general, I would support extending the, the reduction in the tax rates for cannabis cultivators. I think this board has recognized and said at least several times over the last years that cannabis is here to stay, and it's going to be part of this county going forward. And, you know, it's difficult as a cannabis cultivator because they are treated so differently from any other agricultural product. They're taxed locally and by the state. They're competing across the state, and different counties have different taxing systems. And at the same time, the legal cannabis market in California is still dwarfed by the black market, almost to, you know, a 10 to 1 ratio based on the DCC's most recent market report summaries. So, you know, my advice would be to continue this, the reduction in tax to the cultivators. It benefits them. It'll benefit the economy, and it will overall help the county. So, thank you, and have a great afternoon.
Thank you. There is no more. All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the board. Is there any, go ahead, supervisors. You guys were at the same time.
I just have a couple comments to make. Patrick, we got a lot of comments, ecomments about this, but we're not subsidizing any industry here. We are a net positive with our cannabis revenue, correct?
Yeah, I mean, from, from my office perspective, it is a net positive that we are bringing in revenue. It is being allocated in your budget to other expenditures. So even if revenues are down, I'm, I'm not seeing that it's anything but a positive.
And, you know, we, we don't tax grapes. We don't tax other agriculture. So that is the big difference here. And another thing I just want to raise, in conversations with Sheriff Bingham, we're at a point right now where we have the lowest amount of illicit grows we've ever had. And that's incredible. And it's because we've been able to support this legal market over the years. You have a graph here that shows the recovery, and we're having modest growth over the last couple of years. And one of the callers is correct. That was in part because of the CAN grants that helped support and pay those tax bills when years were really lean. So I, I think my colleague has a really good point. When this was thought up in 2017, we couldn't anticipate where we are today. And so we have had to adjust to make sure that this market and this industry isn't crushed. But we also have found, I feel like we've hit our stride a little bit, and we can look at this year to year, because we are able to invest in our communities significantly, especially with Cloptor and with the Roadmap Task Force. We've been able to make real change with the revenue that has come in. But we have to, if we increase our taxes right now, when everyone else is decreasing, then we, you know, it's, it's like killing the golden goose. We can't do that either. We need to make sure that this industry is still viable. And so we have to be able to be flexible and adjust year to year. I would love for us to be able to get back up to those original rates. But then, we, if we did that today, we would not have a sustainable market. And we would lose all of our growers. So I'm happy to look at it another year. If you want to bring the resolution back, that's something that I would support for one more year.
Vice Chair, then Supervisor Owen.
Well, I appreciate all the public comments, and I just still think, based on the state of the situation, the state of the industry with what's going on, it makes sense to extend it another year. My understanding of the law regarding all this, and unless I were to get different info from, from our legal counsel, is that we have full authority to, to lower or not reduce the tax, as long as we're not increasing the tax, we don't have to go back to the voters. That's the way I understand the law. And I know there's been some testimony that, that it's potentially different, but, you know, that, that's the way I understand it. So, just looking for confirmation.
Yes, under Articles Six and Article Seven of Chapter 18 of the Lake County Code, they, each of those articles contain provisions as outlined by both you and Supervisor Sabatier regarding any modifications that would result in a reduction of taxes that is allowed as authorized under, by approval by your board.
Thank you. And lastly, you know, I, I said I was willing to go a year because I don't want to lock us into a longer time. I think it should be reevaluated. Again, if we end up doing this, I think we should reevaluate it again.
Supervisor Owen.
Okay, what I have, I would like Mr. Lloyd to give us his feedback on whether we are violating Proposition 218, as well as Measure C on that, as Mr. Tom Lysick had mentioned. And I would like to have clarification on that. I am, though I would like to see it expire, I am willing to compromise for another year, rather than extend it for another year. What I would like to see is 25% increase. I would like to see it all the way. But if we could try a 25% kind of cutting the, cutting it in half on that, and still staying under the canopy rather than, rather than cultivation, would give us still some more, some more income. And if we could try that even for a year, because I'm obviously outvoted, so I'm kind of grasping for straws, to be, to be honest, whether my colleagues would be interested in entertaining that. To go to increase it to 75% of what we voted on, providing it is legal, as well as the, staying with the cultivation rather than the canopy. And that's a huge compromise, but I'm outnumbered. So that's what I'm asking.
I agree with that. Supervisor Sabatier?
I just want to mention a couple of things, and maybe I'll get myself in trouble. Mr. Bill, I, I hear you, and I think that services that help people that are vulnerable are important. Love to see if maybe, we, we, we have our cannabis going into specific areas of our budget, and one of them gets split up into law enforcement, environment, code enforcement. And then the last one is education. I know that our library receives some funding from education, but if we see an increase, and some of that money is more, made more flexible within the education bucket, love to see a proposal coming from Konokatai to see what it is that the county can do to support that type of work. Because that's been something even Lake County Office of Education has been looking to do as well. And I just think that that's what that bucket is for, is to continue that level of care that our community needs. And so seeing the increase is not a bad thing, in a sense that it does create more money in those buckets. The other side of that is, I know when we started in 2019, so I don't know what it was in 2017, it was like $1,200 a pound. Now, a dollar per square foot is not a percentage. It's a dollar per square foot, no matter what. I'm just going to inflate the price for today, even though I hear 200, let's just say it's 400. That's a 66% decrease in the value of a pound. We've decreased the taxes on it by 50%. It is not a perfect match. And again, I hear people saying 200, which would be a much more massive decrease. And so the, 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 the flat rate is the problem. Period. You have to be able to move around in a flat rates environment. If I sell a door and it's worth $1,000 today, but I have to pay a, pay a sales tax on it, if it's worth $10, I'm not going to get killed by the flat tax because the sales tax is a percentage. And so we have to be flexible. This is why we were given the flexibility within the ordinance that was passed in the measure. So I, I just think, I am open for looking at the data to see if incremental increases, 55%, 60%, I don't know about 75%, we're just pulling numbers out of, out of our heads here. But if we can show, because is it just that we have more people growing cannabis, and that's why we saw the 40% increase? Is it that those same ones grew more of their stuff, and were able to make more, more money off the same amount? I don't have that specific data, and maybe we need to drill down a little further. But I, it's, I feel, I feel like there's some people in this room who are not happy with cannabis, and are trying to get it back on the ballot so that it can cancel the industry altogether. And I, I just think you, you can't put the rabbit back in the hat. I think we have to work with what we have. It is $3 million-plus that if we lose, that is an issue. We need to operate it correctly, and we need to use the funding correctly. But I'm worried that the conversation is going in a direction where we're being told certain things that our past county council has disagreed, our current county council disagrees, I disagree, just so that we can see it diminished and maybe even vanish. So I, I worry about some of these conversations.
Supervisor Pyska.
One of the things that our tax collector and I have talked about is getting to a point where we can incrementally step things up. And I think we do need to get there. I don't think this is the year. I think maybe next year, we can look at, look at conditions and reevaluate, because I think going from 50 to 100% is going to be really hard. I do want to get back up. And I think maybe that's a goal that we can try and look for that data you're looking for, Supervisor Sabatier, so that maybe next year, if conditions are a little bit different, maybe a little bit more favorable, then we can start making those steps up. Because I think that should be our goal.
Supervisor Owen?
This would be, this wouldn't affect the growers until 2027, when they have to pay this, just so we know. Making the decision now to go up 25%, which is a compromise, and kind of bringing it up slower to, so it'd be at 75% instead of 50%. And that's what I'm asking for support on right now, if, if anybody is open to that.
You want me to elaborate why I said I would support that?
Yes.
Because I was one of the supervisors last time that said I would do it for one more year until, so I want to stick to that.
I think Jessica, didn't you say that too?
I think, I think she said something like, we talked about incremental.
I mean, if it's a different year, I mean, different things have happened. So I wanted to get to a point where we could figure out something in the long term. But the long term is going back to the original plan. We can only do these things temporarily. And I just, it's, for me, I don't think that the time is right.
But I just wanted to elaborate, because I know you had mentioned last time, I didn't hear from you. And so I want to make sure you do hear from me. I, I get a little frustrated because, you know, just being a part of this for a couple of years here. Just, you know, we, we came to the, this whole initial starting point with agreeing to what, what we were starting with, right? And then we get, you know, a good tax year with, with the initial stages of this, the cannabis permits and whatnot. We're getting people from the black market onto legal market, and we still, and then we get to a point where it's, it's hurting. You know, it starts providing fruit. People are vying to me in my district, what I use my cannabis discretionary funds for, but yet are some of the same people that try to kill every cannabis project that comes forward. That's frustrating, but they do have valid concerns. It gets very frustrating for me to hear, that's why I mentioned my frustration with the odor before, you know. I think, I, I get that there's permit issues. I get that there's, there, there's beliefs, but it's frustrating to hear when people say things like, you know, pot, or whatever, or that it's not, it's, it's hurting people's, you know, there, it's making them, you know, lose intelligence and things like that. There's so many things we can compare to that, and I hate to, all lives matter, that whole situation. But it's just, let's stick to the points. I understand we, we want to ensure we get all our tax dollars, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're at this point. I still want to stick to what I said before, though, and that is to, if we can, increase it, you know, an incremental amount. I don't care what that is. I would be glad to do that. But it looks like we have the consensus for what it is. And so I just did something I don't like doing, and that's talking about something we already had a consensus to. But I know people want to hear from me, so.
Well, I was trying to persuade.
No, not you.
I'm trying to twist arms up here.
I just want to ask, and I apologize, Mr. Sullivan, can we please put the Measure C on your website? I go to the, the main page for it, and it has cannabis taxes. Measure K is available. Measure C is not. When I do a search for Measure C, I can't find Measure C. It shouldn't be a hidden needle in a haystack. It really needs to be obvious and available. I can't seem to find it.
It's interesting you would say that, because I was actually going to remove Measure K from our website, because the appropriate place to house it is in the MuniCode section, because it's, those code sections are the same. So I, I guess I actually have a certain little concern.
We can link it.
I'm happy to put a link. Yeah, yeah. But, but yeah, we want to make sure that it's always in the most updated way. And for instance, Measure C is, you know, my intention is that that language will all be changed in two weeks, because we will be bringing a different revised ordinance back that's going to be adding a lot of enforcement language. So, but yeah, happy to put a link up.
And if those resolutions can be made available as well, because it's hard to follow the bouncing ball since we've had some changes as well. So it just shouldn't be, if I'm struggling to find something, then I can only imagine where the public is in trying to do a search on our Lake County website and really cannot come up with, and I forgot that it was on the MuniCode, but the MuniCode, that doesn't search the MuniCode when you do the search.
Yeah, we can include a link.
Please.
Vice Chair?
Well, it sounds like where we're going is the, it sounds like we're going to extend it another year. But I would like to throw out that maybe we can bring this discussion back sooner next year, a lot sooner than November, because there has been, several folks talk about maybe those other changes. So I don't want to wait till the end of the year, once we, we look at it again, if we go the way I'm thinking it's going to go. I'd like to get it back sooner.
Maybe budget.
Yeah.
All right. You have direction? All right. Anything else?
No, we'll return with the resolution.
Did this need a vote to extend, then this?
No, it's just for direction.
He's going to come back with a resolution.
Yes, to bring a res- a resolution.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.